Welcome back, everyone. This is the session of planning board roles and responsibilities from Ben Frost. I do not know if Ben, oh, here he is. He's coming right up. Let's see if your audio works.
Okay, I'm right here.
Oh, it's perfect. You're great. You go ahead and take it away and I will mute myself. Thanks, Ben.
Thanks, Heather, and good morning, everyone. That's, I'm so excited to be with you today. I wish we could be in person, but you know, this is, there are great advantages to doing this virtually. Not the least of which is I'm getting a cold, getting over a cold and you probably wouldn't want to be around me anyway. So I'm, I'm hoping my voice holds out. I did have laryngitis yesterday, but I think I'll be okay today. So I'm going to talk about planning board roles and responsibilities as the slide says. And there's, there's just an enormous field of endeavor here. And so we're just going to be touching on a few things briefly. And you know, if you have questions, certainly, please put them into the chat and we'll get to them as, as time allows. And, and I'll try to, you know, pick up on some things along the way as well. As, as we talk about the planning board, you have basically three different areas of activity. Whether you're appointed or elected is immaterial. Your, your job is the same. And I got, I labeled these, the three realms of the planning board. There's a planning role, planning board. You have a legislative role and we'll talk a little bit about the things that you adopt or help to adopt. And then finally, you have a regulatory role. And that's where frankly, a lot of a planning board's activities are devoted, the regulatory role, dealing with applications that come before you. But the other two, planning and legislative are also vitally important. So we're going to start with those first. But before we do that, finding the law, now, this is a term used in law school. It's finding the law, but you don't have to be a lawyer to have the tools available to you to find what the law is. There are a lot of tools that are available to you as planning board members, including the, the laws themselves, the statutes. So every year, the New Hampshire Legislature adopts, well, they, they introduce something around 1,000 bills, some of which deal with planning and zoning. And every year, there's something that has some implications for local planning boards. These are all available online. They're also available, of course, from the Office of Planning and Development through this book. You know, the New Hampshire Planning and Land Use Regulation. The current version is white. This is last year's version, it's blue, at a remarkably deep discount from through your regional planning commission. You can look for bills, those things that might influence your, your activities by going to the legislatures or the general courts website. Also, if, if you read about something in the newspaper that it's the Supreme Court having decided something, you know, the zoning board or the planning board having a decision upheld or overturned, you can access all of that online. The Supreme Court has an excellent website that allows you to find those, those opinions. And if you, if you want to do broader searches for things, I encourage you to look at a couple of resources like the Cornell Law School, Legal Information Institute. This was one of the first bodies of, of law on the internet. And it is really excellent and it is maintained free of charge. Also, Google Scholar is an excellent resource for people to look up cases. And in fact, that might be the easiest way to find cases because it is searchable. The, the New Hampshire Supreme Court's website is not as easily searchable. Finally, you've got, you know, thousands of your fellow planning board members who are themselves interested in these kinds of issues and are, you know, have a lot of experience, many of them, and have some really good ideas. Several hundreds of those, at least over 700 by, by last count that I'm aware of, belong to Planlink, which is the listserv, email listserv maintained by the Office of Planning and Development. So do consider joining that. It's, the traffic is relatively light and the answers often are informative, but take it with a grain of salt. And of course, last, the municipal association, you know, people like, like Steve Buckley and Jonathan Cowell are available for you to call if you have a question, as long as your municipality is a member of NHMA, and I believe all of them are. Also, there's other things too. The Peter, used to be edited by Peter Laughlin, he was the original author. The Bible, essentially, the thing that the Supreme Court turns to when it doesn't know the answer, they will turn to this and it's now updated annually by our friends Cordell Johnston and Christine Fillmore. NHMA's website is also searchable and has a lot of stuff available. Last thing is, don't forget your own municipal attorney. This is the person who's going to be trying to keep you out of trouble and to get you out of trouble when you get in trouble. I, I sometimes put a slide here, it's a cartoon from the New Yorker magazine. And it shows four guys going down a steep hill on a toboggan and there's a guy behind them on the toboggan wearing a suit and, and carrying a briefcase. And, and he's saying to them, look, I'm not saying it's going to be today, but someday, just someday, you're going to be glad you took me along. Remember to talk to your town attorney. Now let's take, this, take a look at this, this flow chart. I call it a map because I'm a geographer. This is, I'm not going to spend time on this, but this just shows the relationship among different things. And it all starts with the master plan. And that's something that your town decides that they want to do. And then from that, you get zoning and you get the subdivision regulations and you get, you know, capital improvements programs and growth management ordinances and a whole host of other things. And then there are some other things that are not directly related, other land use boards. And, and then the relationship with state law as well. And some, some state agencies do rely on local zoning issues. So for example, the permitting of daycare centers call for a compliance of a certificate showing that you're complying with local zoning and that's up to the municipality to fill out. So lots of these things are intertwined in a very deep way. Now let's get to the, those three realms I talked about. And we'll start with the planning role. And I've got a couple of slides here. I'm not going to go deep into these things, but really just skate upon the surface. Starting with the master plan. This is something that the planning board does. It's not town meeting, it's not your local legislative body, it doesn't get adopted by town meeting. It is something that you, the planning board, create and adopt, subject to a public hearing, but it's something that you adopt as, as the planning board. If you look at the statute, it's in RSA 672 and 674. There are certain chapters that are enumerated, but there are two that are prescribed, they're required. You have to have, to have a master plan, you have to have a vision. You have to know, or at least say what you want your town to be like at some point in the future. And it also has to have a land use section. The rest is optional and there's a long laundry list of, there's a long laundry list of sections that could be included. Now, it does not, the, the section that enumerates these, these optional sections does not say including but not limited to, meaning you can do other things too. So there's, there is an open question right now. You know, so let's say, for example, you've got a town that has a, an enormous theme park, like a Busch Gardens or Disney, and you want to create a zone in your zoning ordinance or you're a section in your master plan dealing with large scale recreation parks. Well, of course, it dominates the local economy and it dominates land use. Think about planning in Orlando. You, you could do something like that, but the statute doesn't specifically allow it. So there's this open question, can you do that? Are you prohibited from doing that? I, I can't really opine on that because there's no case law on it. But you can pretty much embed just about anything you want to do under one of the optional sections. So you can get creative, but also bear in mind that there's this, this potential conflict with the limitations. Also, you know, consider the, the broader purposes of zone, of planning. You know, what, what is it you're trying to do as a board and as a town, as a city? And also, what, what are the limitations, the, the things that you can't do? Certain, you, you can, you can say, we absolutely do not want to have, you know, hazardous waste disposal facilities. And you may say that in your master plan. And you may even say it in your zoning ordinance, but that's something that is in effect preempted by state law. So there are limitations over things that you can do in planning. Also, a lot of people say, well, you're, you're, the law says you're supposed to update your master plan every 10 years and ours is 15 years old. We're not in compliance with the law, therefore this, this master plan is a piece of junk. Well, no, there's actually nothing in the statute that says you have to have a master plan done every 10 years or every 15 years or every century. And in fact, if you're in a really small town and there's absolutely nothing going on, then your master plan that may be 15 or 20 years old may actually be okay. But you probably want to revisit it anyway. There is some case law coming out of Portsmouth many years ago that talked about having to update a master plan on a regular basis. And that was because Portsmouth itself had adopted a standard of revising its master plan. There's nothing in the statute that requires you to do that. Now, I said earlier that the, the planning board creates and adopts the master plan and, and subject to public hearing. It's, it's your thing, but it's really a public document. And to do a good and effective and meaningful master plan, you should engage with the public extensively. Now, this should be something that reflects the public's view, the public's vision, your townspeople's vision of what they and you want your town to be at some point in the future. Now, master plan is strictly an advisory document. In some jurisdictions, there is what's known as a consistency requirement. That is, the statute says that zoning shall be consistent with the master plan or comprehensive plan. New Hampshire does not have such a requirement. It doesn't have specific regulatory weight, but it does have meaning. So it does support in, in some substantive way, the regulations. So you'll see courts turning to the master plan as they're interpreting the zoning ordinance. But really, mostly, those decisions focus on the language of the, the regulations themselves, not on the master plan. Now, let's say you've adopted your master plan and you've got some things going on in town, your transfer station needs to be redone. You've got intersections that need to be built, you've got sewer lines, you've got storm sewer, you've got public water. These are all capital systems, right? And they need updates from time to time, they need maintenance. You, so you decide, well, we want to adopt a capital improvements program. This is also enabled statute in RSA 674. What a capital improvements program is, and this is something that is by statute under the planning board's jurisdiction, unless your town or, or city has adopted the alternative of having a capital improvements program committee. But now the default essentially is to have the planning board do the capital improvements program. It is a schedule of municipal capital improvements for at least the next six years. And things should be categorized by levels of urgency or need. And those, the, there's no definition to them. There's no definition to what, in statute, to what a capital improvement is. So you want to define what a capital improvement is. So in my town, a capital improvement is something that costs $15,000 or more and has a useful life of three or more years. You can come up with your own numbers, there's no magic to it. And, and the, the purpose of this is to plan or in the planning realm, right? Of, of the planning board, this is a planning tool, not just for, for you. The planning board has a reflection of the master plan. But really, in fact, the statute says the sole purpose of the CIP is to guide the governing body and the budget committee, if you have one, as they develop your annual budget. And it actually has more purposes than that, but the statute is, is kind of, I'd say excessively demonstrative in saying that the sole purpose is, there, there are more purposes than that. So the select board, your town council, your budget committee should be relying on you, the planning board, as you develop the CIP to advise them on, well, here are what we think are the priorities for the capital improvements program based on our understanding, based on our assessment, based on our interviews with the department heads over the next six years. It is an important tool to help you level off impacts on, on your tax rate as you're trying to, you know, kind of gauge, well, we, well, let's do the sewer line this year because we're going to be doing these, these roadways this year and that'll smooth out the impact on the tax rate. Now, sole purpose, there is another, another purpose other than what is listed in the statute. And, and that is that ACIP is a statutory prerequisite for the adoption of an impact fee ordinance and a growth management ordinance, if you choose to do those things. You have to have a CIP in place before you can do those things. So again, like the master plan, the CIP is something that's created by the planning board and adopted by the planning board.
Hey Ben, hey Ben, excuse me, can I, can I jump in for a quick second? There's some chat going on regarding the master plan. So I guess the, the basic question for clarification is, since the master plan by law has no legal standing, why is it even mentioned?
Well, it's mentioned here because you are, let's move back to the master plan. You are the planning board. This is your job. So as I said at the outset, a lot of the time you spent is spent in, in your regulatory role, dealing with applications. But this is a really important document. So your zoning ordinance should be couched within the master plan. It's a guiding document. It's your, it's your aspirations. It's what you want to be. And it, and it should, it should guide how you do zoning. It does not, you know, so zoning can deviate from the, from the master plan and still be supportive and still be legal. But it's going to be a lot stronger if it is, has support in the master plan. So it is, it's an opportunity also. So it's, there's the legal side. It's also an opportunity for, for you, the planning board, to be working with your town. When you're, when you're reviewing an application, you're not working with the town. You, you are, you are a body unto yourselves. You are administering something. You're deciding whether to say yes or no to something and you take input, but ultimately, it's, it's your decision. Technically, the master plan too is your decision. But it really should be a reflection of what people are saying and thinking. In, in some respects, when, when I've chaired a planning board, I've, in reviewing, you know, dealing with an application, a controversial application, I will say, this is not a popularity contest. In some ways, a master plan is a popularity contra, content, contest because it is supposed to be a reflection of what people want. So it is guiding principles for your, the land use within your community. And Heather, feel free to interrupt with any of those other great questions. I'll, I'll just talk very briefly about growth management and moratoria. These are ordinances adopted using the zoning power. But they really, and I say they're really for the purpose of promoting better planning. So a growth management ordinance requires a, a study that substantiates its needs. So the, the planning board has to actually engaged in, has to engage in a study in support of a growth management ordinance. The key thing here though, in addition to having a study supporting it saying that's needed, is it's supposed to be time limited. You can't adopt something and say, well, we're only going to do, you know, 3% growth every year for the next, well, in perpetuity. And there are some communities that have done this and they, those ordinances have been struck down years ago. It has to have a sunset date and the maximum is five years. So it has to be something that is essentially a recipe for eliminating its own purpose, giving you the tools to essentially catch up with your capital needs. That's the basis of a study. If you don't have sufficient facilities to accommodate growth, well, you've got five years to do it. So folks, get to it. A moratorium is something that's done on a very short run, maybe only for one year. And may only, and so unlike a growth management ordinance, which may be proposed under zoning by a, a citizen petition or by the planning board, or even by the, the local governing body, select board or, or town council, a, a temporary moratorium can only be proposed by the planning board and is good only for one year. And under statute is appropriate only in unusual circumstances. For many years, I, I searched for what unusual circumstances were. And then as a consulting planner, now 20 years ago, in, in the town of Unity, I was, you know, the town was presented with, and this is a town of, you know, 1,500 people, 700 housing units. And the town was presented with a 500 unit housing development. I said, that's unusual. And so the, the town did adopt a temporary moratorium and revised its zoning. Now let's move to the legislative role. And, and this is really important because this is the basis of a lot of your activity. The zoning ordinance is, it, it's complex, it's difficult to understand, it's Byzantine, it's important. The planning board is essentially the architect of the zoning ordinance. The ZBA, you know, so you're the authors. The ZBA is the interpreter. So they, they, the zoning board of adjustment, they're adjusting, the zoning board of appeals, they're, they're hearing appeals of decisions. So as I mentioned with growth management, citizen petitions are also a way of doing zoning. So you could actually, if you don't have zoning in your town, you could get a citizen petition to establish zoning in the first place. That's, that's a possibility. More commonly, you have citizens who are petitioning to amend a zoning ordinance. And as long as it meets the statutory standards, 25 signatures from registered voters in the municipality, then that's a good petition, even if it's a bad petition itself. And so what, what if it, what if it doesn't make any sense? Well, and that the planning board says, this doesn't make any sense because you're, you're required to hold at least a public hearing, at least one public hearing, whether you're proposing the amendment or a citizen petition is proposing the amendment. You might say, this doesn't make any sense. Citizen petitions, you can't amend it. It is what it is. Now, what if it's illegal? Well, then that's, that's a select board issue. And, and they, they're faced with the thorny issue of whether to include it on the warrant or not. And I think there is, I think Steve would probably support me in the, the, the suggestion that if, if the citizen petition is proposing something that is illegal, then the select board would be enabled to withhold it from the warrant. But if it just, if it conflicts with something else, that's not illegal, it's just conflicting. You, you're going to be obliged to put that to the voters. Now, there, there is a, now several years old amendment to statutes that requires notice to certain people. If you're changing, say, the uses in a district, just pay attention to those notice requirements. Now, we've talked already about the relationship to the master plan. It, it's, your zoning should be a reflection of the master plan. It makes it, makes the zoning ordinance stronger if it is. Also, within the, the, it's called the, the rubric of zoning is this thing called innovative land use controls at RSA 67421. It's a laundry list of things that you can do in addition to standard zoning. And it includes a lot of different things. And it is, it, this is where the language including but not limited to is used. So it, that language creates a class of ordinances. And this, and so you might find, well, it's not specifically listed here, but it does follow the general theme. Then you're probably enabled to do that, but talk to your legal counsel. Also specifically listed is accessory dwelling units. And there's, there's a separate statute covering that. Workforce housing is, you know, there's a section on, on affordable housing in innovative land use controls. There's also a statute dealing with workforce housing and we'll get to that in a little bit. Now, let's say you've adopted your zoning or even if you haven't and, and your town meeting, your, your local legislative body says, well, we want to regulate zoning. Most communities do regulate subdivisions. Most communities do regulate subdivision of land. You, you are, you, the planning board are enabled then to adopt subdivision regulations. And here's the statute, 67435 through 38. Let's say, let's say you don't have zoning, but you want to regulate lot sizes. And you say, well, we, you know, our town, our town has voted down zoning every year for the past 25 years. But we, we've got this, we've got this subdivision regulation power. So we're going to start doing things that the town has said we can't do because they don't want to reduce zoning. Well, you can take that just so far. What, what you can do is regulate lot sizes based on specifically public health and safety. So lot sizes for septic systems, but not lot sizes for rural character. Well, you need five acres because it looks better. You can't do that through subdivision regulations. So there's this, certain things you can do with subdivision regulations that look kind of like zoning sometimes, but don't take it too far. There is also a, a definition in the statute of what a subdivision is and it's a long, long definition. And you can adopt it if you want in your regulations or not, if you don't want to. You can rely strictly on the, the statutory definition. But if you do adopt the statutory definition and you spell it out in your subdivision regulations, make sure that you're copying down the full statutory definition. Because it's, it is enabling legislation. So you, you, you're enabled to adopt subdivision regulations. And if you adopt less power than the statute grants you, then you're going to be able to wield less power than the statute grants you. So there's a case from Milford a number of years ago where the planning board was trying to do something with its subdivision regulations based on the statutory definition of subdivision. And the court said, well, planning board, you didn't adopt the full definition of what subdivision means. Therefore, you can't regulate this specific thing. And I think it had to do with condominium conversions. Now, what should be in your subdivision regulations? Well, everything you need to do to make good decisions regarding the subdivision of land. So it's, you know, property boundaries, lot configurations, road construction standards, very important. Because you are going to be faced with, if, if you've got a large subdivision that has roads in it, you're going to be faced with the, the problem of dealing with new road construction. Not that you have to supervise it specifically, but you need to tell the developer how it should be built. So subdivision regulations are adopted by the planning board, subject to at least one public hearing. And that goes for any amendments to subdivision as well. Similarly, site plan regulations, and you see similar language here on this slide that relates back to the subdivision regulations. And they are adopted in a similar, using the same process really, but in the similar fashion. Here, however, zoning is a prerequisite for, for site plan regulation adoption, unlike subdivision regulation, which doesn't require zoning as a, as a prerequisite, site plan regulations do. unlike subdivision regulation, which doesn't require zoning as a prerequisite, site plan regulations do. And see the same language here. They shouldn't be used by planning boards to do things that the zoning is supposed to do. What's the planning board's jurisdiction? Well, it has to do with, it's kind of a jurisdictional threshold. So subdivision regulations, site plan regulations cover non-residential uses of property, or where there's three or more units, residential units, in a building. So think of commercial development and multifamily development. That's where you use site plan regulations. What should they cover? Well, anything that has, is associated with a commercial use of property. So parking, landscaping, visuals, the environmental impacts, the architectural effects of a building. So you want to look not just at the bird's eye view of plan, a plat, but you also want to be looking at what the visual impact is of a building on its neighborhood, its surroundings. So you can have architectural standards in your site plan regulations. Now, you're not looking at the interior of a building, you're not looking, it's not a building code. What does it look like on the outside? And what's the building's relationship to its, to the site, and to its surroundings? These are important things that get to character of your community. That said, you shouldn't have site plan regulations that say, "We want it to look nice." You've gotta have clear standards. So if you're doing, dealing with, you know, window treatment, or gableing on buildings, you don't want flat roofs, except under certain circumstances. You want to have that spelled out in your site plan regulations. A note here, and I mentioned this with regard to subdivision regulations, the same applies here. Bonding, if you're doing improvements for off-site impacts or onsite impacts, these are controlled by the planning board. So you can't say, so with a subdivision approval, you've got a road construction, and you're requiring the developer to post a bond. Here with site plan regulations, you're requiring the developer to post a bond for off-site impacts or landscaping. These are all controlled by you, and it's non-delegable. It's something that you, the planning board, have to deal with. Like subdivision regulations, site plan regulations are adopted by the planning board, subject to at least one public hearing. Also in the legislative realm is workforce housing. And Steve mentioned this earlier in his presentation. There is a law that's been on the books since 2008, and this is reflective of 1991 case law, Britain versus the town of Chester. "All municipalities have an obligation to provide a reasonable and realistic opportunity for the development of workforce housing, as defined in the statute." I'm not gonna get into that here, but it has to do with affordability and income targeting. There are lots of communities that say, "Well, we do, we already have, we have enough." Well, what's enough? We have our fair share. That is in the statute. And some actually do, but it's a matter of proof. So you might turn to your regional planning commission for assistance there. And in fact, last year, the state's nine regional planning commissions completed regional housing needs assessments, which spell out what the numerical obligation is of each municipality in the state. And those are very helpful documents. But workforce housing, the statute says that, and why is this in the legislative role? Well, it's part of the zoning ordinance. The planning board should look at the collective impact, and that's the language of the statute, of all of your land use regulations, zoning, subdivision, site plan regulations, anything else that's adopted under chapter 674, including historic district ordinances, I suppose. And what is the collective impact of those, put them all together, on a developer's ability to build workforce housing? That is economically viable, and you can read that to mean profitable. If a developer can't do it profitably, then you're not meeting your obligation under the workforce housing law. So this is a, this is really a planning function of the planning board as well. You've gotta, you've gotta look at, you know, where you should be allowing workforce housing. And that's a, that is a thought exercise that should be part of a master plan. So it's part of the planning realm, it's part of the legislative realm here, because you're proposing the changes to your zoning ordinance to accommodate your obligation to provide the reasonable and realistic need or opportunity for workforce housing. And then also, as a planning board, you're gonna be reviewing these things, and gets into your regulatory function. The last thing I have here, under the legislative role, is impact fee ordinances. And this is one of those innovative land use controls. And lots of towns talk about impact fees, some have them, and we should have an impact fee ordinance, because this development's gonna do this to our town. But an impact fee ordinance is a, or an impact fee is a fee that's imposed on new development to account for that development's impact on the town's capital facilities. So it could be the road network, it could be water or sewer, it could also be the school district. Now, that's not a municipal, that's not a town or a city capital facility, but it is a school district facility, but it is part of the statute. It should be based on a careful, thoughtful study, and that's the subject of a schedule of payments, essentially. So if a development does this, then the impact fee is this, for these reasons. It is adopted using the zoning power, so you're gonna go through the hearing process, and then a local legislative body vote. Note, this is not for operations and maintenance. This is for construction or replacement of capital facilities. It's not, it's not for, to rehabilitate your old sewer system. That's something that you should have been doing all along. It's also specifically not for open space acquisition. Now, impact fees, once collected, have to be used within six years. What happens if you don't use them? You gotta return them, because they're no longer yours to use. So, and this is one of the difficulties. Well, capital, you know, our sewer line is, it takes a long time to get done, you know, to get the planning. Well, okay, I understand that, but this is what the law says, six years. So you have to be essentially ready to go with a project as you're collecting impact fees. This law, and if you read 67421, Romans 5, which is the impact fee statute, you'll see that it embodies these two constitutional principles, rational nexus and rough proportionality. Rational nexus is that logical connection between the development and its impact on capital facilities. So this development is going to do this thing to these capital facilities. That's your rational nexus between the two, directional nexus. And it has to be roughly proportional. So let's say, you've got a capital facility, let's say, an intersection that probably needs to be rebuilt, let's say you're building a roundabout, and it's gonna cost you a million dollars, and the development that's close to it is going to have an increase of, you know, 10% of the traffic on that intersection. You can't make that development pay the full boat. You can't make that development pay a million dollars for that development. You might logically be able to get them to pay 10%, if in fact they're having a 10% impact on that. That is rough proportionality. But I would not use my thumbnail sketch analysis as the basis of trying to enforce something, get a good study done. And you see, these two decisions here, Nolan versus the California Coastal Commission from 1987, which is where we get rational nexus, and Dolan versus the city of Tigard, Oregon, in 1994, where rough proportionality comes from. The US Supreme Court recently revisited Nolan and Dolan in Sheets versus the county of Eldorado. In fact, this was a decision that was announced, I think, last month. And there was a case from, I think, 2016, or 2014, or 13, Coontz versus the St. James, or St. John's River Water Management District in Florida, about ad hoc actions, and whether Nolan and Dolan applied to them, and the court said, "Yes, they definitely do." And what the, a question that was left unanswered in the Coontz decision from 11 years ago was whether Nolan and Dolan, that is rational nexus and rough proportionality of these exactions or impact fees, applies also to legislative actions. An impact fee ordinance is a legislative action, and the Supreme Court has said, "Yes, indeed, they do apply." So Sheets was a man in California, in this rural county, Eldorado County, that applied for a building permit to construct an 1,800-square-foot manufactured home. And the county, now through its power, counties don't have the power here in New Hampshire, but towns do, assessed an impact fee, this is a manufactured housing, a double-wide, assessed an impact fee of $23,420 to, for the improvement of the county's highways based upon their plan rate schedule. This was a legislative action of the county. And the Supreme Court said, "Well, the Nolan-Dolan test do apply here." They didn't say that that impact fee was illegal. They simply said that rational nexus and rough proportionality apply. So this has been remanded to determine whether, in fact, a taking under the US Constitution had occurred. And this was a unanimous decision of the Supreme Court. It's kind of unusual, there were three concurrences coming down slightly differently. And this is Mr. Sheets in front of his manufactured housing. He did build it under protest, he did pay the $23,000, and presumably now he's having won his first battle at the US Supreme Court, is back in court, trying to reclaim his money, and show, to demonstrate that a taking had, in fact, occurred under the Nolan-Dolan test. So you have to follow those two considerations when you're doing impact fees. Okay, let's turn to the regulatory role. And this is where you spend most of your time as a planning board. And I spend time on the other two roles, because they are that important. But you spend most of your time here. We've talked about the adoption, the legislative activity of subdivision and site plans, site plan regulations, but now here, you're applying them, you're using them. Let's start with pre-application. So if you look at RSA 6764, that is the Board's Procedures on Plats, which is probably the most complex statute you're gonna encounter. It has a lot of stuff in it. It has this pre-application section, which is broken down into two different sections. And you can allow either or both of these to happen, or you can say, "No, we're not gonna do either." You choose. The bottom bullet here is, you choose whether to do this. And if you're authorized, you can require, if you're, so if your town meeting, or your town council authorizes you, you can require applicants to do pre-applications, either or both, but it's your choice here. So the first is preliminary conceptual consultation. So it's non-binding, actually, all of this is non-binding. It's non-binding, no public hearing is required, and in fact, no abutter notification is required. It should be an agenda item. Someone comes in with an idea, saying, "Hey, I want to develop that parcel, you know, on the edge of town into a large-scale theme park. What do you think, planning board?" And they don't have any engineering, they just have this wild idea that they want to do something really wonderful. And you might think, "Oh, that's a terrible idea." And you might want to say to them, "Well, I think that's a terrible idea. First off, it doesn't comply with zoning. Second, it would have these enormous impacts on this, that, and the other thing. And third, it's, you know, habitat for the blanding-spotted turtle, an endangered species." So lots of bad ideas, or helpful advice. Well, you know, you could consider these sorts of things, you might want to try this. It's an opportunity for someone with an idea of development to come before you and ask for your informal, non-binding advice. The second, so that's, you know, the pre-applicant should not be presenting to you engineered plans. Design review is where it gets some preliminary engineering, saying, "We've estimated, we've got a plot of land, we could do a 20-lot subdivision, we're looking at a road configuration like this. What do you think of this? How about if the road came out on the town road here?" Again, this is non-binding, it's an opportunity for discussion with the planning board. But here, abutters are notified. So this is where you want to allow the abutters to have notice. In fact, the statute requires a butter notification. What's the difference between the two? Level of engineering, level of detail, level of specificity. Now, public hearings are not held in either of these. Generally, when I've chaired a planning board, I have allowed for some level of public input, because I think it's a good opportunity for that interchange of information between the pre-applicant and his or her would-be neighbors, which they should be doing anyway. Now, one of the big differences here, though, is that if an applicant, pre-applicant, is engaged in design review, they get a certain period of protection. So it is a more formal process. So you get an application for design review, or pre-application for design review, and the planning board hears it. It starts a clock of indefinite time period. And so the planning board might do, "Well, why don't you come back next month and see if you do this, or that?" Or you might just do it all in one night, and say, "And we're gonna call the design review of this done, we're closed. We're closing the design review." Once the planning board closes design review, then that applicant, that pre-applicant, has 12 months of time from the end of that design review to file a formal application based upon that design. And what that protection does is it protects that proposal from changes to zoning and other regulations. So this is, one of the issues here is that lots of times developers will come to a town, do design review, and then they'll go away, and someone will file a citizen petition, saying, "Well, we don't want that to happen." Then the citizen's petition prevents that from happening. Design review allows for this informal interchange between a planning board and a pre-applicant, and gives some level of protection to that proposal from changes, from that sort of reactive approach. Okay, so let's move on now to, get the right slide here. The formal application, here's what you have to do, notice to abutters. You must, you must, you must, you must, whether you're doing subdivision or site plan review, ask yourselves the question, "Does this development have the potential for regional impact?" And this should be, yes?
Sorry, I just want to ask one of the questions directly relevant to what you were just talking about. Before the 12 months is up for vesting, an applicant files a submission. However, it is not accepted as complete, as a complete application by the planning board, is it still covered?
Yes. Yes, it is. And that's the whole point of this limited vesting. It protects, because a pre-application is not an application. It's a, it's preliminary engineering. So you're probably better served by having an application for pre-application, that is, an application for design review, which is, would be a really simple thing. And they file this, this application for design review, and file with it the preliminary plans. This is not a formal application. But the act of doing that does serve to protect that, that pre-application from changes for that 12-month period after the planning board says, "And we're done with design review."
Thank you.
Okay, so back to regional impact. If, and the statute covers what is included, but this is one of those, including but not limited to sorts of things like number of housing units in a development. Will it have an impact on surrounding communities? You have, as a, as a You have as a municipality, you have an obligation in some respects to look out for your neighbors. And this is to give your neighboring municipalities the opportunity to weigh in on the impact of a development in your community. So what's the impact on them? Doesn't give them the right to appeal, but does give them the opportunity to give you input. So you have to ask the question. Does this have the potential for regional impact? And if there's doubt, it weighs in the balance of, yes, it does have the potential. So proximity to a municipal boundary, number of housing units, impact on water resources. There's a list of things that you want to look at. The regional planning commissions all have guidance on how to do this. And I encourage you to turn to your RPC for that assistance. Once you make, let's say you say yes, then there's a certain period of time you have to notify both the the affected municipalities and the regional planning commission. So they have the opportunity to provide input to you as if they were abutters. So they give you input. They don't have the right to appeal, but they do have the opportunity to give you input. Now, when do you, you're given this application, you've notified the abutters, you've done the public notice. You you have the application in front of you. And it has, it's mostly complete, but there are a couple of things missing from your checklist. The question for you is it, is it sufficiently complete for you to begin your review to accept jurisdiction? And sufficiently complete is a question of fact for you, the planning board, to decide. So you might say, well, there's no, there's no engineered plan for this subdivision. It's not complete. That's not sufficiently complete. But if they're asking for a waiver on something. And you would say, well, it's not there, but they are asking for a waiver. Then we might say that it is sufficiently complete. Once it is sufficiently complete for you to accept jurisdiction, then you say, yes, we're taking jurisdiction. And and your 65 day clock starts ticking. You hold the public hearing. Who gets to speak? Well, this is really, and it is in part an open question. As a board chair, I have tried to be generous in who gets to speak. Because I think you're better better served by giving people the opportunity to voice their opinions. Subject to some limitations. But you really want to start by focusing on the applicant, of course, but also abutters and anyone who can demonstrate an impact on their property. But other people in your community as well. Certainly, if it's a development of regional impact, you might have people from the neighboring community coming to speak as well. So. You hold your public hearing. You might. Recess your public hearing to a future meeting, recess the the application to a future meeting. With time, place and date certain that way it doesn't require a formal notice of abutters again. Or you might decide that particular evening, close the public hearing and then you begin your deliberations. But you have to make your decision. Within 65 days, that is the statute. But what if you can't? Well, there's an opportunity in the statute, and I think this is 67641 or 2F. That gives the 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 planning board the opportunity in essence to negotiate with the applicant. We need some more time. Will you give us more time to do this? We need another month. And usually, the applicant is going to say yes, because the alternative is for you to deny the application, right? So usually, the application will say, yes, you go beyond 65 days, you're okay. So. But if you make your decision, you're making your decisions with conditions. Because not everything is exactly as it should be, or you're you need, there are additional permits that need to be done. And I know Steve talked about the interplay between state and federal permits. So let's say you need an alteration of terrain permit from the Department of Environmental Services. Say, subject to DES granting this permit, subject to, you know, Army Corps of Engineers, subject to one thing or another. Subject to Department of Transportation access permit getting, because you're on a state highway or something like that. So these may be conditions precedent that say that the approval isn't final until those things are met. Conditions subsequent are those things that are ongoing conditions, such as hours of operation. So those are conditions of the approval that continue on in perpetuity. And I talked about this thing here, which Steve also mentioned about the interplay. You can't say, you can't refuse to accept or approve an application on the basis of state or federal permits that have not yet been issued. But you can condition those those applications. Saying you have to go get those permits.
Ben, we do have a few questions in here if you want to take them. Can you speak to RSA 676:4I-C1?
I see.
Yeah, Roman numeral 1, C1. When does this 30 days start at the time the application is delivered?
Oh, this is the acceptance of the application. 676. See.
Let's go ahead and look it up also.
Yep, 30 days following the delivery of an application. So the board shall at its next regular meeting or within 30 days following the delivery of an application for which notice can be given in accordance to the requirements. Determine if the submitted application is complete. So that. That 30 days starts with the actual physical delivery of the application to. To someone who is able to receive it. Now, there was a case some years ago. Where, and I forget what the town was, it might have been Croydon. But some, it was a town somewhere over on the western side of the state. And my recollection is that Bart Mayer from Upton and Hatfield was representing the town. And it had to do with interpretation of this language, delivery. What does delivery mean? And and Attorney Mayor used the, because the allegation was, well, we delivered it. But it actually hadn't been physically delivered. Bart said, well, someone could actually just go up and lean the application against the town hall. And that might constitute delivering. And his his point was, that's a ridiculous supposition. So it actually has to be delivery to someone who has the capacity to receive it. So the mail is an appropriate form of delivery. So once you put it in the mail, that might be your 30 days. So I think that answers the question.
Yeah, then there's a clarification. I think this was regard to the design review application. He, Jim's asking, if an applicant files an incomplete application that is still an actual design, does that then vest their project during the designer view? Even though.
Interesting question.
Then he says, even though the application may not come to the planning board until 24 or 36 months after the close of the design, which I think you had said 12 months. It only gives them 12.
Yes, 12 months for design review. The answer is no. If you're, there has to be an intention to do one thing or the other. You can't, you can't take a bad application. And that says on its face, application for a subdivision. And then say, oh, just kidding, I was really just trying to do design review. No, you have to have an intention to do design review or the formal application. If you have an intention to do design review and you're following the checklist. And this is a good, a good place for checklist. You're meeting the checklist of things that are required for design review to get that vesting, then you get that vesting. If you have just a poor application, that does not constitute a design review. And you don't get that vesting.
We had another question. If you have a request for an RV park and the community has a 20,000 square foot requirement per RV, is this considered a subdivision?
An RV park? Well, I think this is, we'll call this a hypothetical. Because it probably isn't. I think it's going to depend on how those lots are being treated. It could be a subdivision. Because if you look at the definition of subdivision, and it depends on how those lots are being treated. So like, kind of like a manufactured housing park, they could be a subdivision. But you can also treat it somewhat differently under your regulations. So that may be a little too fact specific without sufficient facts to give a good answer. But that might also be a good question to pose to your legal counsel.
So there's a few more just came in. What if DES requires changes that then changes the plans, the planning board approved prior to the DES review? What then if the changes are not really de minimis?
Right, so this is an excellent question, and this happens not infrequently. So you have, you're at the planning board, you've made an approval, subject to the applicant getting their alteration of train from DES. And then they go to DES and DES makes some significant changes to the plan based upon what they're requiring. That applicant has to come back to you, the planning board. And this is why this would be a condition precedent. So this is before final, your final approval lodges. So they come back to you and say, well, DES is making us do this. We need to make these alterations to. The plan based upon DES requirements. And and so you you adopt those changes to to your plan.
Thank you. Then there was another question. Stephanie seems to have answered this one, though. It said, can a planning department restrict the acceptance of an application to certain dates, like the third Wednesday of the month?
Oh, sure. Yeah, there's no reason. I mean, you've got, you've got a schedule and you're holding it. You want to, you know, keep a regular rhythm of applications. Yeah, there's no reason why you can't do that.
So if somebody came like on a Tuesday, you could say, no, we're not accepting applications today.
Oh, I see. Well, is the. I don't see the reason for that. As long as there is someone who has the capacity to accept delivery of an application, then you should be accepting. That is, receiving the application. I don't mean accepting is the planning board's role, but receiving the applications. It's not, it's not like the planning board is holding office hours for the public to come in and for them to receive applications. There should be staff available to receive the applications. And whenever, whenever the town hall is open and staff is there, then you should be able to receive those applications.
Thank you.
Excuse me. So let's talk a little bit about waivers. I mentioned this before. The statute calls for you to have the capacity to grant waivers to your subdivision or site plan regulations. And there, and the statute spills spells out these two ways in which you can grant waivers. So first, you have to make a finding that the there would be an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. And waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Question I have below is that what does hardship mean? It's not the same as, it's not the same hardship that the zoning board of adjustment is considering when contemplating a variance. It's a different hardship. It's a hardship to the applicant, not a hardship to the land. But this could be a financial and economic hardship, unlike what the CBA considers. Or the alternative way of finding basis for granting a waiver is. That circumstances relative to the site plan itself, that is, the land, the property suggests that based on this plan, a waiver might be appropriate. Conditions of the land. So those are two bases. And the waivers need to be recorded in the minutes. And they, so they should be clearly spelled out why this, why these waivers were granted. They should be done on an individual basis. Okay, so we talked a little bit earlier about impact fee ordinances and impact fees. And that's where we talked about Mr. Sheets and his mobile home and his $23,000 impact fee. There's also, if you, what if you don't have an impact fee ordinance? And you're not subject to that, you know, the requirements of that particular statute? Well, there's this alternative for off-site exactions. So this, but it, this, this alternative is limited in its application. So you can do it for highways, drainage, water and sewer. So impact on your roadways, impact on the drainage systems and on public water and public sewer. So in the absence of an impact fee ordinance, you can do these monetary exactions, requiring a developer to pay the costs of these. Public infrastructure improvements on a case by case basis. So this is on an on an approval by approval basis. In addition to this limitation of uses, there's, it's also likewise limited to the Nolan and Dolan. Rational nexus and rough proportionality standards. Now, what happens, it's a monetary exaction. So you're going to go to pay $100,000 for this roadway to do this turning lane and signalization and all that. What if the developer says, well, I'll pay for it? You have to accept that. You have to, you have to accept the developer developer's agreement to do that change. When they're, when they're offering to do it. Now, like impact fees, you've got to use these things within six years. So if you, it is a use it or lose it from a municipal perspective. And by lose it, I mean, you've got to return it to the developer or the developer's successor in interest. So the vesting of development rights. This is an important statute and is one that, especially as you're dealing with developments, take a long time to come to fruition. RSA 67439 governs vesting. Once you've made your approval, you're done. Well, you're not done, because you may be dealing with conditions precedent. And you may still be dealing with conditions subsequent as well. But once you're done, then the developer, the applicant, has 24 months. In which to get going. And what does that mean? So they, they should engage in active substantial, active and substantial building or development within the first 24 months. What if they don't? Does it mean that the development, the approval has lapsed? No, it's this statute simply means that that approval will be subject to changes to the regulations. So this is an incentive, it's a really strong incentive for applicants to get their projects moving. So each application, each approval is protected from changes to local regulations for the first 24 months. After which, they may be subject to those changes if they've not engaged in active and substantial development or building. If they did, if they've done that, they've got, if they're going onsite, they've got the foundation pour, they've got the road base put in or whatever it is that they're doing. Then they gain an additional three years of vesting, protection against changes. By which time, if they have achieved substantial completion, then they're permanently vested against changes. Now, what, what constitutes active and substantial? What constitutes substantial completion? Is something to be dealt with either by the planning board on a case by case basis. That is, you're going to spell out what is meant by active and substantial or substantial completion in an approval. Or it should be in your regulations. Note, however, there is a bill in the legislature that would extend these timelines to five years instead of 24 months. And 10 years instead of what I say is a five year vesting period. This does not mean, and this is the point I was making initially, this does not mean that the approvals lapse. It simply means that they may be subject to changes to regulations. Okay, let's take a quick look at.
Can I interrupt for a quick question before you, before you moved on from exactions? We had a question of, in the exact, the slide reads, in the absence of, can you have impact fees for roads and also have exaction fees for water?
Oh, yes. Yeah, back to here. Yes, you can. So an impact fee ordinance is, should by, by design be specific to certain capital infrastructure. So you might have an impact fee for highways only. You could do exactions for water and sewer or for drainage. You might have an impact fee ordinance for water or sewer. You could do exactions for highways. Yes, definitely.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's turn to this really important case from a few years ago, Dartmouth College versus Hanover. It's important because it, it, it's really a, call it a torrid force of how not to do decisions by planning boards. And this involves the town of Hanover Planning Board in a case that Dartmouth College brought against the town for denial of a proposed indoor practice facility. This is a 70,000 square foot indoor practice facility, the IPF, adjacent to existing facilities, part of the Dartmouth campus, part of its land that Dartmouth has owned. It's an area known as the Sunken Garden, that was known as the Sunken Garden. Yeah, so I'm foreshadowing there. And it's in this institutional zoning district, which is really designed for Dartmouth College. And similar entities. Now, it, it abuts a residential zone that has single-family homes. So it's a big facility next to a residential zone. The, the design, after many, many, many months of working with the planning staff, Dartmouth came up with a plan that met the, the zoning ordinance and site plan regulations numerical standards. And then presented this application as a 150-foot setback, which is based on the, the height of the building. And, and it's six months of hearings before the planning board that started in 2018. And this is what it looks like. This is an architect's rendering. And I think ultimately, it did wind up looking something like that. And this, the, this here, the light blue structure in the upper right-hand corner is the proposed location. And I, I did this, blowing it up, looking at Google, Google Maps. So you can see the relative proximity to the residences in the neighborhood. This was done by the abutters to, this colorfully illustrating the size of this facility in comparison to someone's modest bungalow or a British Airways 747 jumbo jet. It's a big building, make no mistake. So the abutters naturally are complaining about the impact on the neighborhood. And they, they cite all these different things. The sunlight was one of these things. So Dartmouth conducted a shadow study showing how the, the building would impact the neighborhood based on the angle of sun at different times of the year. And, and the zoning administrator found that it would, that this was fully compliant with zoning and recommended 21 conditions. And Dartmouth agreed, this is after, you know, months of negotiations, agreed to comply with all of the conditions. The planning board denies this four to one. You know, citing different sections of the site plan regulations, specifically the general considerations. Not, not the specific numerical standards, but the general considerations. Doesn't conform to the master plan. Well, let's remember the, the relationship with the master plan. Impact on abutters and neighbors and others, impact on fiscal health of the town without actually providing any evidence. And then the harmonious and aesthetically pleasing development of the town and its environs. These echo the language in the site plan regulation enabling statute. So go back to that and take a look at it and say, well, yeah, they're relying on the statute here. Dartmouth appeals, the abutters intervene, the town sits it out. And this is between the abutters and Dartmouth. There is no dispute, but that this does comply with zoning. The trial court upholds the planning board decision saying, yeah, it's blocking the sunlight. This is going to have a big impact. And the implication is that there were facts on the record that supported the board's personal feelings about this. Because the board, individual members of the planning board, remember, only five members of the, the board were deciding on this. They, they expressed their views. And the Supreme Court said, the trial court got it wrong. The Supreme Court reversed and said, un, and the trial court unreasonably relied on facts not on the record. Meaning the planning board unreasonably relied on facts not on the record. The, the colleges, the abutters analysis of the college's shadow study was inconclusive regarding the five closest residences. But the court said, oh, but it's going to cast a shadow. It's going to cast a pall on the neighborhood. And in the board itself, the members were mixed on this issue of, of sunlight and whether there would be an impact. So they were, the, the records show that they were at best mixed or ambivalent on this. One said, it's just an affront to the neighborhood. Which may be true, but that's, that's pretty subjective. The plant, the Supreme Court looked at the board's different reasons, negative impact on the butter, and found that the trial court simply erroneously construed the record in support of the planning board. The, how about the board reason number three, the harmonious and aesthetically pleasing development of the town and, and surroundings? This is a permitted use in an institutional zone. And it meets all of the numerical standards that the town established to account for impact on the neighborhood. So building, bigger buildings have to be set back farther from the property line. So the, the purpose of those standards is to protect the abutters interests. And Dartmouth College presented a plan that did that. So I'm getting kind of worked up about this. What's this really about? From the Supreme Court's perspective, and that the, the dissenting vote was the chair of the planning board. And, and she had expressed a warning to her fellow board members that this would be a taking of private property. And I think that that's really what colors the Supreme Court's view of this. And, and so the court, the Supreme Court used this language, cannot use the site plan review process to require a landowner to dig, dedicate its own property as open space for essentially public use without proper compensation. That is takings over. So you see the language from the, the New Hampshire Constitution. And of course, the Fifth Amendment taking clause from the US Constitution, nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation. So in effect, the planning board was saying, you've, you can't do this because of the impact on the neighborhood, even though it meets the, the standards. The Supreme Court said, in essence, that's a taking. The, the, the court also went through a lot of other things here. But I, I commend this to your attention, because it is an important decision. Life lessons from Dartmouth versus Hanover. Controversial cases, you have to do thorough findings of fact, and this is now the law. You, you have to do findings of fact in your decisions. They should be developed. They should serve as a clear basis, underpinning your decisions. Abutters interests are important, make no mistake about it, but they do not reign supreme. The applicant has rights to, even if it's Dartmouth College, a huge institution, a hospital, a large manufacturing facility, they have property rights as well, and you need to be mindful of their rights. I think most importantly in this decision, be careful of your own clear standards. If an applicant's meeting them, you, a denial has to be supported by some compelling evidence. It's got to be something that says, even though you're meeting these standards, there are these other extremely important things that aren't being met. And those two should be supported by some standards, evidence and analysis. So that, remember, in the Dartmouth case, the Dartmouth College did an analysis. The town did, the, the shade analysis, sunlight analysis, the town didn't, didn't do an analysis of that analysis or do its own analysis. They simply took Dartmouth's analysis and put it on the record. They didn't do something that contravened what Dartmouth said. They simply said, well, we don't agree, without any evidentiary support. And finally, as a member, your observations, your opinions are important. So we have these multi-member bodies, planning board, seven members, ZVA, five members. Why do we have multiple people? To get different perspectives. Your perspective is important. But your own opinion may itself be factually insufficient in the face of uncontroverted expert evidence. You need to have some facts supporting your opinions. Your opinions are important. And you'll see this coming up in other cases as well. Okay, I'm going to move to the, the last slide here, and this is my dog. It's his birthday. Happy birthday to LoD. And we're asking, do you have more questions?
There are a few questions in here. I'm not sure what this question is referring to, but it says, what was the base case on how long a site plan approval extends? Not sure entirely sure I understand that.
Well, let's see, see if I can ferret an answer to this. There, there, there is, so what is the base case on how long a site plan approval extends in perpetuity? So these, these approvals, once made, are perpetual. Now, you do have RSA 67439, that's the vesting statute, which currently says, if you do active and substantial construction in the first 24 months, you, the first two years, you get an additional three years of vesting. And by which time, if you've engaged in substantial completion of the improvement shown on the plat, then you're permanently vested. Now, that's a, that's, but that's not, that's not a time limit on the approval. That's simply protection against changes to the regulations. So if, if you, if you're an applicant, let's say, and you get, you have a site plan that's approved and you do nothing without something in the site plan approval itself saying you have to do something. That, that approval is perpetual, but it may be subject to changes to the regulations. So it's, it is, it's the best answer I can give under these circumstances without having specific details. But these, under statute, these thing, these decisions are perpetual. Think about a subdivision. So you approve a subdivision plan, it gets recorded, that, that's a property interest. That is a perpetual property interest.
So there, there've been quite a few questions, and I think we've answered most of them, but related to deadlines. And I'm not, I think this one might be a little, it says, doesn't the date of submission of an application begin the 21-day timeframe for the hearing? And if so, what if the applicant drops off five minutes prior to the town office closing? Which, which ends that workday? Should that day be included as 21 days, or should the 21 days begin the next day?
So the 21 days is a different standard, and that's not a deadline for, it, that, that, that keys in on the date of submission. So, and this is 674, 67641B, which says, the applicant shall file the application with the board or its agent at least 21 days prior to the meeting at which the application will be accepted. So provided that the planning board may specify a shorter period of time in its rules of procedure. So the purpose of that statute is to give the planning board and staff opportunity to review an application for completeness and to advise the applicant in the interim, of those 21 days, that there is additional information that they, they should be providing or to prepare comments to the board, or simply to give the planning board time to review the application. So what that means is, and the, generally speaking, you do not count the day of the action. So you don't count that day. It's 21 days starting the next day. So do the math, look at the calendar, count the days out on the calendar and figure out where you're supposed to be. The best course of action for a town, for a planning board, is to publish the dates. So, so let's say you're holding the, your, your monthly planning board meeting on the second Tuesday of each month. Count back 21 days and publish the date. This is the day on which you must submit, by which you must submit materials to the planning board or its representative in order to be heard on the, 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 the board's regular meeting date.
Great, thank you. I am not seeing any new questions. We did have quite a few. There was a lot of chat going on in the chat about master plans, deadlines, and a lot of people were chiming in. So I don't have any, as far as I know, I don't have any outstanding questions. So I thank you very much, Ben, and I believe we have about 45 minutes for lunch and then our next session. So I appreciate your time and everyone for being here with us. Yeah, thank you. We will, we get some clapping going on down there. And so we will go ahead, I'll take control and we will officially go on lunch. And we will be back at 12:45 for Stephanie Verdiles' session. And after that, there'll be a, a round table with, with Ben, Stephen and Stephanie. So thank you, everyone, and we will have a good lunch. We'll see you shortly.